A little bit of honeymooning.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Andrew, I'll let you call off what we're gonna go through.
Steve, come on up.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Acting Chairman.
Good evening, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to everybody as well. I get taken out of order because I bring gifts.
Well, that's always a good reason, isn't it?
Because I bring gifts. And a couple of things, to update you on a couple of things. This week I was able to get on at Joe Ozelak and J.B. Ozelak's house and bring them a check for $4,000 for storage container for the musical equipment for the Quavon Band because storage underneath the bandstand, no matter what we do for that, ultimately will be problematic. They have a location and Joe Ozelak works in construction like you and he found some really good deals on some pleasing, apparently, storage containers. Currently, the Quavon Community Band is storing all of their equipment at Joe Ozelak's house, so he had a vested interest in...
In the concrete vault under the bandstand, it's not the best place to store it.
Right. Apparently, they've got an agreement from all the powers that be for a location, so they're thrilled to get their check for $4,000. In addition, we were able to bring the Dewal family, Lisa, Bishar, and Amber $1,500 to contribute to the Joe's journey for recovery. They've been working very hard on trying to get young people to inspire them about substance abuse issues.
Yes.
We've spoken to Lisa, she's kind of come to the foundation meeting and if she can show where the money is going and utilization, we're gonna be receptive to adding that. In addition, we received an application through Ann Mailis, who's a member of our group for the town of Barry. The Bates Fountain, where the little water fountain in the center of town is, for a historical note, Dr. Bates, who died in 1937, brought four of his own children into the world and none of them lived to maturity. The ultimate irony, because he brought every other kid in Barry into the world. He was the quintessential... Those of us in Barry a long time, remember Dr. Pickens and people like that. Well, he was like that. The fountain needs about $300 worth of planter and the business association strip in front of the bank, we're doing $1,700. So here's a check for $2,000 to the town of Barry to help defray the costs on that. And in addition, we got an application through Commander Fleming of Post Two and through Andrew for the 9/11 memorial fund that we're working on. I understand that the steel from the World Trade Center is already in receipt to the town of Barry.
Right.
Which is very difficult to obtain.
For a while. We've had it for about a year and a half, I think.
Yeah, but they're very difficult to obtain. It's a long conflict. They don't want it to just go anywhere. They want to do respect and reverence for the 3,000 people that died there and the 343 firefighters who went into the building when they were collapsing to save lives as well. And I know that the town and through the Legion will do a great job. I actually did some homework on the 9/11 memorial and to where fire station through Acting Fire Chief Eddie Look, who just retired this week, and he and his wife spearheaded that effort. And the total tune for that was about $20,000. So we wanted to make a first step effort to the town in that regard and as Vince Lombardi once said, "Winning begets winning." And as we see other contributions come in, here's a check for $5,000.
Thank you very much.
To begin that process as well, to inspire people because the World Trade Center and what happened on 9/11 happened to all Americans and it's something that's very important. Because Quavon region is not just Barry, but the Quavon region... We did $5,000 this year for Joe's jackets in Hydrick, which is coats and boots. We haven't hear about coat drives, but kids need, and poor people need shoes and good footwear. And I have pictures that I'm gonna share with Ellie. They filled the Hydrick Town Hall full of clothing for good stuff and good boots. And they got a deal to the Hydrick Promise Go Up and for $5,000 that we did.
Yes.
I was in the basement of the Hydrick Community Building and their food bank have two nice freezers and they had a big piece of tape in front of their refrigerator. And I says, "What's that?" "It doesn't work." I says, "Well, come see us." And we brought them down a check for $1,000 for new refrigerator for the food bank. Well, that is a year. Because again, town lines are arbitrary geographic measures that survey is put out 300 years ago. People are people. And I sat at a table at the Hydrick Town Offices and talked to people that were in line to get some food around Christmas. And they're all our people. So hopefully helping all of these community areas. Again, I've told you before, the fund is a $1.5 million endowment from Fidelity Bank, the Barry Savings Charitable Foundation. We expend approximately between 4.5% and 5% of the interest on that fund annually. So this fund will outlast all generations forever and ever, an eternal fund. Depending on the market and things, we're anywhere between $75,000 to $100,000 a year that we can give out to good programs in Barry. With very little paperwork and very great benefits. So on behalf of the nine members of the Barry Savings Charitable Foundation, I present you with these checks and now we'll get out of here and let you go do the business of the town.
Well, on behalf of the town of Barry, the people of Barry, we thank you very, very much. This is generous, unbelievably helpful. And good time to ask, do we have any update from the 9/11 committee? Because if we do have the committee, I don't know if we've heard anything in a while.
Business, Senator, if you wanna provide a quick update.
We were working on with DPW Super and Jason Benoit. We've located the original granite, all the pillars that are on the North Common. Those pillars came out of a quarry up off of Hawes Hill.
Okay.
They've located stones that Jason, who is also amazing, Jason Benoit, that he'll be able to use. And the two buildings that will represent, or the former buildings that represented the 9/11 twin towers, will be made from that granite. And the steel I acquired from the New York, New Jersey Port Authority, and you're right, it took me eight years to get them, will be incorporated in that. There's two monuments simultaneously going to happen. One on Barry's Veterans North Common and the other at the Brewer Safety Building.
Yes.
That will be EMS, fire, police. This will be for the service people. So simultaneously, two similar but different memorials will be done and the steel will be incorporated in both of them. So there's a lot of planning and behind the scenes stuff people don't see or hear. Until things actually start to happen, we picked a spot on the common, pretty close to what we want, where we would want it. We're gonna come before the select board when everything's finalized so you can put your blessing on it or not as to the location. And at this point, we're waiting because of the weather. And we did, we did get permission from the landowner for this granite, who's gonna donate it to the town.
Excellent.
Which is pretty nice. And the fact that it's the same stones that are on the common now is really, really something. We have a artist rendition that Jason Benoit made on a computer that's a 3D. You know, it's like you're actually standing out there looking at this thing.
Mm-hmm.
We'll bring it in at present.
Yeah, you might wanna put it on the website.
Yeah. Is that on the website or...
It generates goodwill.
Andrew could probably get out there. And this obviously $5,000, a good chunk towards beginning whatever expense we're gonna have with it. Because I'm sure it's not, not everyone's gonna donate everything to it as we go.
Right. But Mr. Chairman, again, if we see positive action towards a legitimate goal here, then we're not done.
No, 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 by law, shut, I'm sure, but this is...
And I would say, I worked on the Vietnam Veterans Monument in 1983. It was a three-year effort because even now, 35 years later, we still found at least three or four names that we are going to add to that wall. Hopefully, that will be done for Memorial Day this year. We're looking forward to having that.
Even more unfortunate, we'll probably never get them all.
Right. It was, it was not an easy lift. It was a three-year effort and I won't get into that now. So I will conclude by saying this probably, God willing, the creek don't rise my last time here before Andrew leaves. And I just wanted to congratulate you. You have done a very professional job for our hometown. We wish you well in Chelton. I know Chelton very well. When he interviewed, I says, "Listen." They called me and I said, "I don't wanna lose him. I don't wanna lose him."
We also do the same.
But I'm not gonna kneecap him for a career opportunity for him as well. I've known him for once, he was in Three Rivers as well as Barry. Your future is very bright, Andrew, and congratulations. Thank you for what you've done.
Share our Senate very well. See, thank you very much. All right, well, please, we'll put in your position. I don't know if the special account those have to go into for those, but I would trust that gets done and where they need to be.
Yep.
Excellent. Very good. All right. I'm just gonna briefly sit, the meeting minutes we have, I'm gonna put those off until... We often have small changes we all find in the minute. So I don't wanna approve any till Matt has a chance to look at those as well. So we'll take the minutes off of our list for tonight. And I'll let Andrew guide me for what we're gonna do and what we're gonna cover on it because I haven't reviewed this until I just said...
If you wanna just do public comment, if there's anything.
Sure. We'll, we'll take a moment for a public comment if anybody has any comment they'd like to make or a question to ask. Okay, then we'll move on. Chief, come on up. Evening, Happy New Year.
So I'm starting by just handing you some wage increase authorizations for two part-time officers that have gone past their first year. Officer Ruckus and Officer Allen.
Take a motion on that if you want. Authorize a wage increase for those two names.
I would make the motion that we authorize these two wage authorization increases for Bob Ruckus and Trevor Allen.
I'll second the motion. Any public comment questions? I'll take a vote, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed to be negative, so opposed to be approved. Thank you.
Now, to move on with the update, I'll start with the bad news and then work towards much better news. In the budget, we have, we're in line for most of our line items and doing very well in most of our line items. Part-time salaries is at 63.81%, whereas it should be at 50. And I discussed this with Andrew. Basically, what we're doing is we're using our part-timers. We haven't used them in the past, we have more and they're more available and that's offsetting our use of overtime. We had two guys in the academy, they didn't finish the academy till the end of the summer. Then they were in training, so that required not filling with overtime, filling with part-timers. So we've been using them judiciously. I don't know how this is gonna end because we have two more guys going into the academy. But when you get lucky enough, you'll move money from one item, one line item over to make up that gap. Right now, that just represents the fact that we've been in putting them into a lot of open shifts that we would have otherwise paid overtime for.
So that's 68% of, and that portion is how much money?
The, well, the total budget's $30,000, so a little bit more, so like 20.
So 20, about $6,000 extra right now.
Right.
Okay.
If you were to look at our line item for supplies, it would look like we're in the negative. We're not actually in the negative. We haven't got our federal vest reimbursements. So we're expecting that money to come in and put us back into the, but it's slow. And we've been waiting since July.
Anytime you're dealing with that sort of thing, it's gonna take...
So I've called them and we're looking at, you know, 100% reimbursement through state and federal. When the federal government doesn't pay you right away, the state doesn't pay you because you have to show proof you've got federal money before you can get state money. Anyway, I've been in touch with them and of course, they say it's coming soon, so. What's some of the things that have happened? And this is something when we talk to the finance committee that I explain and then they, they understand it. So we don't really know where we're gonna go. This year, we had to buy uniforms for two officers, the ones that I mentioned came out of the academy at the end of the summer. And there's some contract issues that caused us to have to spend more than, we have to spend a lot. We have to outfit them and not use their uniform allowance to do it due to the contract. So beginning of the summer, we had to buy two officers' equipment, which runs up to about $3,000 per officer. Now, we don't really budget for that because we don't budget in advance on the chance we might have to do that. We get into the budget here, if we find that we have to do it, then we try to deal with it, you know, by talking to Andrew and seeing how we can come up with that. And then we just happened to be in a cycle this year where we ran out of shoulder patches and chevrons. In order to buy them at the lowest possible cost, we had to buy more, which basically got us a two-for-one deal. So we bought enough, but it was expensive and so that we should be good for two to three years now that we've bought them. These things, they just come up when they come up. So that's all the bad news. We also were able to switch raincoat vendors. And so upfront, because the contract, we have to buy them each a raincoat. We were buying raincoats at $300 a raincoat. We found a raincoat for $78. So what we laid out for nine raincoats, we'll make back on the next two guys that we hire. So that was another thing that we had to do this year. So then to move on to the better news, as far as training goes, we've completed, all the officers have completed their required training for the year, everything through July. So we're well ahead of that. We have, we're looking at a, what's called the LEAD program, which is law enforcement against drugs. And that's, we're trying to come up with a curriculum for third graders that we can teach them. So we think we may have founded, we found a program that allows you to buy by grade instead of having to buy a bulk program. So we can save money and buy by it. I mean, you're talking about $300 per grade or something like that to buy the lesson and your first set of supplies. Anyway, I'm having a meeting with them in, I think, February.
How's that compared to the DARE program?
Well, the DARE program, which I taught for six years, is basically dead. I mean, it's being taught, but it's, it's not, it doesn't fit Barry. It fits LA.
That's what I'm saying, what's the difference in the two, between LEAD and the DARE? What's the difference?
So we get to go in and, I'm gonna find out specifically, but it's more designed for the town to, or the municipality to use it to fit its needs. So it's a concept that you, you know, you pick the pieces that work for your town. And if it's gang-related and it doesn't work for Barry, we don't buy that piece. So we're trying, I'm gonna sit down and go over all of their lessons to try and find, and I think third graders are what we're aiming for, something that works for our kids and is full of things that would apply more to a city or, you know, the West Coast versus the East Coast. And I, they're using it in New Hampshire, so I'm guessing, based on their success that they're having there, that it's more applicable to our area. And there was some small towns in New Hampshire that are using it. The overall thing about DARE is, you know, it was created in the 80s. And then it's, it's reinvented itself a few times to stay afloat, but it's not current.
Okay.
It also requires the whole program.
Right. And it's like third or fourth grade through, right through high school, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, you buy third and fourth and then you buy seventh and then you buy high school. It requires an awful lot of time with the teachers. It's many more weeks than we wanna spend in the classroom and, yeah.
Okay.
So then we go on to the fleet. So we have the Silverado is finally fully outfitted for, it was bent on the road, but we didn't have a cage in it. We got all that done. The only thing we're gonna do eventually is put a brush guard on the front of it. Right now, it's, so it's out on the road, fully functioning. The Durango, which I drive, is outfitted and in service. And that leaves us with, our fleet is, is in good shape except for 3034 and 3035, which have 125,000 and 136,000 miles respectively. We bear, we, so the 3035 is the Caprice. So we use it sparingly. It's really not good in the winter anyway. And we're having issues with it, but, so those are our two only, our only issues in the fleet. So we're doing better than we've done in the past.
Distributing the mileage better across the vehicles and, because that was the issue in the past.
We are.
When they got the new vehicle, they drove it to the ground and then everything was dead.
We are. Yes, so these, and so these have high miles, but we're trying to, like, for the...
Do something with them.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're babying them along, but we, yeah, we're spreading the other cars around. As far as personnel goes, we've got Officer Chick will be attending the Western Mass Academy in February. He's our full-time officer with, on a waiver to go to the full-time academy. Officer Gillespie, also a full-time officer on a waiver, will be attending the Boyleston Academy in February. So we're gonna lose those two officers for the five-ish months. As far as part-timers go, Officers Goldsmith and Wilson are midway through their orientation training. They're, they're doing very well. Officer Lefebvre, who was at the same level with them, had to take a leave, a temporary leave for personal reasons, but he'll be back and his training was going well. And Officer Lambert, who's been with us for three years, is gonna self-sponsor for a full-time academy because he wants to go full-time and move fully into law enforcement. So we anticipate we'll be losing him probably this year sometime. Because somebody will pick him up. We don't have full-time openings. As far as cases go, I can only tell you, we do have an active case in town that we can't talk about. Otherwise, there's really, there's nothing outstanding that would be of significance to this group. Equipments, equipment-wise, we do have an issue with the, we got $18,000 in a warrant for the guns. Then we, and during the delay, while we were, we went with a very reputable salesperson from a company that's very reputable. And in the time between they gave, them giving us the bid and us getting the warrant, the model went out of production. Then we started to find out that the entire range of models that they were showing us were slowly going out of production. The next one we looked at, with only one department in the nation was, was running it and you couldn't get holsters. And basically, we came to a point where we couldn't be sure that any of these .45 calibers that we were looking at in this price point were gonna be around in 10 years. All it takes is for all the big departments to drop them and then they stopped making the holsters and then you could fix the gun, but you got no equipment to put with it. So we're now looking at a new platform for the .45, which I'm sure everybody's familiar with, which is the 1911 model, which will never suffer that problem. So we're looking at that now.
It's been around since 1911.
Been around, so holsters will be available. The gun's not going anywhere. And it is, you know, it's a very good police model gun. So anyway, we're looking at that, we're getting the prices and then we'll be coming back to you to talk about the difference between the $18,000 and, because it is a more expensive gun.
And what do you do when you're checking for prices and deals? Like, you put that out to bid and you call specific dealers or...
Well, I went down to Hartford where they have the Colt factory. Because if you're gonna get a 1911, we, first of all, we spec'd out all of the major models. And they're all pretty competitive. And then we looked at, so if they're all competitive, what makes them different? And Colt happens to have the most replaceable parts, you know, the more solid internals that... They have a program where you can, I'll just keep replacing the parts in the gun and the gun will theoretically always serve you 25 years. So we, we looked at Smith &amp; Wesson Colt, a variety of Ruger. And then we came up with the fact that Colt seems to be the name that's got the best replaceable parts. Went down to Colt, looked at their, at their guns, saw what they had. And then they gave us a list of the 10 distributors nationwide that would sell to a police department. And we've contacted all of them and we've gotten all of their best prices, including, you know, the price that they would charge us for the gun, how much they give us for the trade-in, what the net cost would be to us. And, you know, we're going with, of course, the least expensive.
So they only have 10 dealers nationwide? Is that because there's something specific for police about this model?
I don't know why it's just 10.
Like, I know the AR-15s and certain parts of that are police only with bump stocks and things like that nowadays. Is there something to the handguns that's...
Honestly, I don't know why. I mean, it's, it's more of an elite gun. I don't know if that's why they only allow a certain number of people to sell it, but that was it, we got the list. It's actually 12, but two companies sell under multiple names. So anyway, we have our, we've just actually today got our, our last price. And then we're pricing, you know, the holsters and all that. So not too long from now, I'll come back to you with a, so this is the difference that we'd like you to consider.
What kind of number, they're looking at on the .45 Colt?
We're looking at, yeah, well, the, right, 1911 Colt .45, yeah.
What's the, what's the price they're throwing you on that right now?
Somewhere in the upper 800s per gun. Versus what was it, somewhere in the 600s or the other?
Is that a staggered magazine, so it's a large capacity? Or they just a straight seven or eight shot or...
Right. Right.
Okay.
So, we carry three on our belt instead of two to make up the difference. So, that's where we are with the guns. The building, might find this of interest. We, have you talked to them?
No, I haven't had, make, or, I haven't had a chance to have contact with them yet.
Okay. So, we have a, a local businessman, Ted Schleslecki, Strulecki, of Solar Wolf Energy, who's, who's offered to put solar on our building. Had no cost. So, we're, you know, it's something I, it's being looked into.
Okay. No cost at like, but I always wonder why.
So, at any rate, that, you know.
What's in it?
He lives in town.
Nice.
Said he wants to just, you know, get back.
Beautiful. You spend a staggering amount of electricity per month there, isn't it?
Two thousand per month.
Two thousand. I wanted to say that, but it sounded too high. I even spit that number out.
Right.
Two thousand dollars a month electricity on that public service building, so.
He, he had said to me that he believed-
Yeah.
He could be thirty to forty percent savings on that.
That'd be nice. Very nice.
As far as grants go, we're working on a, a grant for radios, to get some radios for not only us, but for EMS and fire for free, as long as, it's a regional grant, so as long as they have regional capability, it would be some for us and some for everybody in the Quavon region. We've started working on that. And also from the same fund, we're looking for funding for the next active shooter training that we do at the high school. And again, that would be more of a regional production. So, it's us, EMS, fire, and then surrounding towns.
Think that'll be in the spring?
If we do it, we'll do it in the fall, right, when school first goes back in. We wanna include the faculty, and it would take that long for us to get that together. Then, as far as initiatives that we have, we have a few. So, our, our officers participated in Toys for Joy this past Christmas, which went well. We participated in the gun buyback, and three guns were turned in, which is a good number. And the Christmas parade, which we participated in, was great. We continue to do Coffee with the Cops, so we do that every month. It's not, typically, Coffee with the Cops is an October event nationally, but every month, we send another officer to the senior center to have coffee with them. So, Stetson talked to us, and they asked if we would do Coffee with the student, Coffee with the students. So, we said we would. And so, we bring an officer in once, once a month for seniors. We're just gonna marry it up so that it's, you know, one, at their back-to-back, so we'll send them to the seniors, then we'll send them to Stetson, which we're, we're happy to do and happy to have contact like that. We have a light skills training course in the seventh grade was, is a course that was purchased by Q Drug and is being taught in the Phys Ed Department. So, we have three officers now that have worked with the faculty that teach it and they're team-teaching it. So, we'll have in that, we have Officer Sawyer, Officer Rivera, and Officer Davidson, the SRO, each teaching, well, Officer Davidson's team-teaching three courses, and Officer Sawyer and Officer Rivera are each teaching two. And there's, I think there's a total of thirteen. So, they're not teaching the whole thing, but they're working with the teachers. And it's topics like drinking, use of drugs, vaping. So, let's see, what else do we have? Violence in the media, coping with anger, making decisions, so. Just getting that going now. They've, they've done their training with the teachers, and they, they start their first class and, okay. And then we have our Student Academy at the high school has one last session, which is more or less a graduation-style session. We had a great response. They're continually, Officer Davidson's continually asked if we're gonna run one in the spring, but we're not. We're gonna run one every fall at the school because we're putting together a Citizens Academy for this spring for the town.
How many students get involved in that?
I think it was twenty-six.
Really?
Twenty-seven.
Wow. Nice turnout.
Yeah. Packed the room. It's as many as the room would hold. So, anyway, so we're, we're happy with that. Kids did ride-alongs. That went very well. And-
I would think that always liked that.
We'll do that again next year. And this spring, we're focused on the Citizens Academy.
Now, what's, what's the Citizens Academy?
So, we, we're gonna, we're trying to determine how many weeks it'll be, but I think it'll be eight. And it'll allow each of the officers to, so if we, we wanna have, we'll do it at the high school because our room doesn't, you know, the PD holds twelve, but we wanna get it in the twenty-five range. Where if people from town want to sign up each week, we'll cover a different topic. It might be motor vehicle enforcement, it might be juvenile issues, it could be just basically criminal procedure, administrative issues, weapons tactics. And each, the idea is to give our officers a chance to teach a class and interact with people from town, and give them a chance to meet the guys, see our building, do a ride-along, see, you know, the nuts and bolts, maybe even get a chance to go to the range with us in a limited fashion. You know, and then they, they'll learn and, and the way these usually work, we usually just end up making twenty-five new friends with the department. So, we'd like to do that in the spring, and we're putting that together now.
I think what people have also begun to understand, there's, things aren't as cut and dry as I always think they are for the police. And, you know, what triggers a search or, or ends a search, or, it's just, there's a lot they can learn for how the process works. And it's never what anyone thinks. They just think, well, just arrest them. It doesn't work that way. I think it's a good chance for people to, to learn them all a little more about and have a better understanding of what the officers go through. Anytime they approach any situation, it's not as cut and dry as anyone thinks it is. I think it's a good opportunity for citizens to learn.
You're all welcome to participate. Well, of course, we, you're welcome. Evening. And we have also another thing that happened at the high school. A student started a CSI club and has asked Officer Davidson to become involved, and he's happily complied. So, he's, you know, got more involvement. And the last thing I'll bring to you is that last year, we did a Policeman's Ball in the spring, and this year, we're gonna do a banquet. And we've set the date for April eighteenth, and it's gonna be a fundraiser towards the dog program. And we'll just have more information to follow. And it'll be at Harding Alley.
Okay.
And that's all I have. Got any questions?
One. We have to go to a fire call last week. It was at overnight, and there's an officer with no sergeant on duty. How often do we not have a sergeant on duty, out of curiosity? Is it typically, we have one at night, or is there someone that someone wasn't on that night?
So, no. So, any, every week, we have, the midnight shift runs, you know, four, or, well, four or five nights with a sergeant, and then when he's off, there's no sergeant. The evening shift, depending on, so right now, the evening shift runs with staff sergeant, so generally, two nights a week, there's no staff sergeant. And then depending on when we switch to the next six-month cycle, it's just the midnight shift. Unless somebody, you know, if somebody looks off, sick, or it's a vacation day, we're replacing with a part-timer generally. So, then if that happened to be a sergeant, there wouldn't be a sergeant on. So, we have on-call.
We normally have two officers on overnight, or?
We try to have two officers on to stay within the budget. Sometimes we can't.
I had to stay in there.
We have unforeseen, you know, the, the numbers start to work against us. We, we always try to have two on, but that does not work. And when we run into that situation, we try to fill at least half of, some midnight shift, we try to fill at least half of it with, you know, a part-timer or overtime because we want them, you know.
Some sort of backup locally.
Some sort of backup, yeah. Even though it can happen anytime, when we look at the numbers.
It does.
Yeah. Right. As soon as the guy's walking out the door, it happens, right?
I was just, didn't know how often, because I'd never had any experience with any of the incidents we've gone through, that we haven't had a sergeant there.
Right.
So, for us, I have experience that one wasn't, so I didn't know if it was just budgetary or, but it more or less hit or miss, it's gonna be one or two nights a week that that's gonna occur, just because of schedule.
Right.
Okay. Like, just trying to understand. Sam?
Some, if the chief, some time ago, Stephen Hills was giving us a little more gray hair than people thought that they deserved. How were they, how were they treating your department with their needs, or the fire department, or the ambulance?
Well, I would say that, treat, we, our relationship has vastly improved. I would say that working with Peter Gow is easy. I've, you met him probably. If we have issues, which they're nothing like the issues we had before, we address them. We, you know, we meet, I've met with him at his request several times to discuss issues if they, they feel that there's a surge of something going on. So, we have calls there, but they're resolved usually very quickly and with a lot more cooperation, I would say. So, we have a vast improvement. We still go there. We do still have a good number of calls there.
Does it still cost us a certain number, an annual number that you should, you should pay, that the town should pay attention to? So, we get some sort of reimbursement sorts?
I think, you know, we, I showed the numbers last year based on the number of calls. We're gonna have the same number of calls probably this year as we had last year. We have ebbs and flows. So, if you, if you look at it, we have two officers on duty, and they both go there, and you calculate how much time it was, that's always gonna be the case. In terms of calling people in for overtime or extra duty for Stetson, we rarely have to do overtime.
I wasn't asking about overtime, I was just wondering how much Stetson costs us annually, because when you go, the fire department goes, and maybe the ambulance goes, and so there's a certain cost involved that they, that came with them, that as taxpayers, or as non-taxpayers, they'd have them pay up. And we're, we're ending up supporting them. So, I was just wondering what that, that, what that number was.
I don't have the number, I remember I tried, I gave you a number last year, and I don't, I don't remember what that number was, but it's, it's steady. And that really hasn't changed. It's just in terms of how we handle things with them, the cooperation is better, we have a better, I would say, system working back and forth with them. You don't see the runaways at the level that we saw them before.
Elotments.
Elotments. I'm sorry, yes, the elotments and, you know, you're not, we're not having to call out search and rescue.
Right.
So, I guess, to the selectmen, I'm just wondering whether the selectmen in the town have kind of accepted that that would be a, an additional expense?
Well, if, if you're running a grocery store and you have six employees there, one customer might occupy someone's time for fifteen or twenty minutes asking about a product. It doesn't change the fact that you're paying that employee for the day. With the officers are being paid their salaries, they're not costing us over the times, they're not increasing our line item towards the police. The police may spend more time there than, than other normal homes in town, but given the number of students there, it's not hugely disproportionate. It was compared to the high schools, we called some, but our biggest issue, I think, we had with Stetson going on was, was the elotments, concerns for people's personal property, the safety, kids being in traffic, you know, helicopters being overhead disrupting the town, multiple police towns, police forces coming in. That sort of ended because they've gotten rid of that program. And that was the biggest concern and complaint we had from the public. I don't think we could trace a number to say because the officers went there for, you know, four hours this week, you know, man-hours or six man-hours this week, that it's really cost us anything. Unless you can say, okay, the officers had another call and they couldn't go, and another town had to go take care of it, or, or it harmed us in some other, you know, need for policing, which I don't think that's, that's occurred. The fire department, I think, has been there twice in the last year, brief, which is not outrageous. I think we had a lockout in a room and, I don't recall. In the ambulance, when they go, they are, they are compensated. They, they bill and, they do get paid for it, so.
Thanks.
I think what Dean is trying to say is, we pay taxes in the town, and I know the Finance Committee has looked at this. And they are paying nothing in lieu of taxes.
Right.
Which we pay taxes to support fire, police, ambulance to come to our houses. And I think a lot of people feel that they should be doing something for us giving them the services, as Insight does.
I think it's a reasonable ask. It's some, some dollar amount, but hard to come up with it, and being tax-exempt because the state says they are. So, they really don't have to. So, it is an ask, if we do ask. And perhaps, as they've been more of reable to things, we could come up with some sort of ask.
Some type of something.
Maybe it's not, maybe it's a piece of equipment, maybe it's contributing towards the dog, maybe, maybe they fund a dog. Who knows? I mean, maybe there's an ask we can make. I don't know what that would be, but that's something that we can look at John's numbers later and, and talk to Bobby, talk to the fire chief. And they could work that out with the Finance Committee to try to get a, a realistic number on what portion of our policing they're utilizing and, and see if, if we can discuss it with them maybe and come up with something that sounds like a good idea to you maybe?
Yep. That's what-
I think that's what a lot of people feel, is they're paying for it. You know, they're paying, we're paying for the fire and police.
Right.
And they're getting it and not paying that.
Okay. I just want, like, Dylan?
Yeah, the Insight Center, they, they just donate every year.
They do?
Yeah. Their same nonprofit arrangement.
Yeah, they just donate out of the goodness of the heart.
They do every year.
How's that sound? It's pretty nice.
Sounds nice. Sometimes asking, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. So, maybe an ask could be in order.
But we'll have to, um, let's, let's try to pay attention to those numbers when we make up the budget, and maybe if we have a number or something, we could have a conversation with them and, and ask.
Didn't Insight put the water line up?
Insight did quite a bit. They put their own water supply up for their own sprinkler system. They did bring the water line in there.
So, that other people could connect as well?
Right. But also mainly, so they, mainly so they could accomplish all the buildings and sprinklers they needed. There was an upgrade needed to it, and they volunteered to do it because they wanted to move forward with their project.
And they-
And quite frankly, they can, they can afford it as well, which is good for them. And it was good for us, absolutely.
Yeah.
That was very helpful, so.
If I may, just, an indulgence. I'm not sure if this is a good talk-through, but I'm probably asked in my absence. I don't know if the chief could possibly look to this, but I know that the fire has some dead areas radialized, and you were just talking about getting some upgrades on the, on the, on the radio. Are those areas still existing and the sound effect, the equipment that you use?
Yes.
Yes, on both towns?
Yes, on both towns. We have dead areas. There are areas where our officers may be, and they might be dead for cellphones too, in certain parts of South Berry, for example. But there are areas around town that it's difficult, and I think the only way that we get better services, the radios we're looking at are very high-end radios, but they, you know, they only accomplish so much unless we get repeaters in the cars, and that's not foolproof. So, it's really about towers, you know, it really comes down to towers. So, we have some radio spots that are very difficult.
You know, it was an imperative when I was sitting on, on the pine board, to get that tower up on the hill. And, you know, kind of railroaded through it. To my knowledge, that isn't even used and that doesn't, or if it is being used, it doesn't cover the dead zones. Is that also correct?
Yeah, we, we saw an improvement in cellphone reception in South Berry. Shortly after I got here, we see no improvement in our radio receptions exactly.
Thank you.
Yeah, the only dead spot I'd known about was down on Hubbardson Road in the valley. I didn't know we had other ones.
We do.
So we typically overcome the fire by having a truck up the top of the hill and we can communicate up and through. But yeah, I didn't know we had other ones.
I think that's worth checking. Some, there must be some technical way to address.
Well, we'd have to get to regional dispatch on that because that's really their responsibility. I got a note for that. Rather than regional, talk to Mike and, and see what they have for solution. But I don't know if they are really aware of, we're gonna make sure that we maybe.
Well, we can map them out.
Yeah, map them out and we can, and we can address that with Mike, with Moriarty and get it through the dispatch. That's certainly something that should be addressed.
Thank you.
As I said, thank you. I was only aware we still had a little glitch down in Hubbardson Road at the, at the bottom down near the snowmobile crossing.
Three or four.
Because that's a, that's a deep, deep valley spot, really sharp hills on both sides. But we get a lot of hills in town. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take Neil's next.
Yep. Neil, come on up. Have the hot seat. Oh, it should be warm anyways.
Thank you for taking the time. So in the vein of everybody that's come here before, set the seat for me. I think I have offered a good thing. And I'd like to elucidate and ask you to ask the questions that you need informed from what I presented to you the last time I was here, two, two cycles ago at this meeting, about doing a collective comment as a site to collect input from the townsfolk and.
Real-time input.
Be a source for a lot of things. Be a source for culture, be a source for history of the town. Every aspect of, of a town that we can garnish support for and put that forward, have it amplified by having a public discussion of it in form to have understanding about what's going on. And I think it's only a benefit. I mean, with Andrew leaving, it's gonna be, it's gonna leave a hole. And I think this would be an augment and we're not married to it. If it doesn't prove out, then it doesn't have to happen.
I do know.
And I don't really actually, I'm looking for the blessing. CMRPC has blessed to do this. And, you know, the number of people that I've talked with in town, say probably less than fifty, but not many, less than fifty. Everybody's been drooling over the idea of the construct. So I'd like to get some blessing from this board to carry it down and further forward. That's what I'm here for.
Yeah, the Town of Groton, where, that's where I'm from, there's a Groton forum page. And I tell you, there's a lot that goes on there. People look out for, you know, what's going on in town, help for someone looking for yard work, someone looking for work. It's a great community resource. I just don't know how, I think one of the things Matt touched on is the policing of it. There's always some individual that's gonna wanna put something up that's inappropriate or obscene or, you know, harmful to somebody else. And my only concern is the policing of it. I think it's a great idea and I would definitely support the idea. Dylan?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was, if you were looking at more like a forum-like, different topic pages, like a classic forum style or more of a wiki platform or?
It's gonna be a community effort. So it's not my idea exclusively. If I had all my druthers, we would have every element that is interesting put out there and then have people in the body be able to comment and bring, bring further insights and further observations to whatever they, you know, they wanna.
Still requires an administrator someplace.
Well, it's gonna be an algorithm. But it could be a self, you know, this is my ramblings once again. It could be a self-regulating body. So everybody that's adding submission in there, if you all of a sudden have somebody who goes awry, you know, with verbiage or whatever, that could be self-policing. You say, okay, you know, obviously block that, make a flag that account. And enough flags, they just get dropped off the, and they, they can't post there anymore. So it could be self-policing. I'm, I'm not trying to make this difficult, I'm trying to make it really easy.
I'm horrible with technology, I'm horrible with the internet, I'm a horrible.
Well, you know, you know what?
So I, I understand the concept.
You know what it is, don't you?
Well, yes and no. I mean, I'm antiquated and slow with it. I've, I fought getting a smartphone till this last generation smartphone for me. So it's not that I don't like the idea. I'm very ignorant of how it works and how, how it is policed and how it's established. So I have to trust that's part of why I liked, having Andrew, he's, he's good with IT and things and having people to, to count on that are knowledgeable, which I admittedly am not.
You know, it's an evolutionary construct. It's not, you know, it's not, this is A and B and that's where it goes. And you fit it in between those two points. It's gonna be something that's gonna evolve. It's going to, you know, teach us as we go. But I think it's.
Andrew, do you have?
It's meritorious of comment done.
My only thing is that I, I don't think that it should be a town-sponsored platform.
Then that's responsible.
All I'm just saying is, you know, it's fine to do that. I just don't think the town itself should have its involvement, should have its involvement. Because at that point, you're talking about, you know, everything that goes on to that becomes a public record that needs to be maintained, that needs to be auditable, that need, that if you're going to then start flagging people, having a policy on what, what is, what is being flagged. And then the town is opening itself up to potential libel or liability if it's then saying that this is a message being put forth by the town. That's why with our social media pages, basically everything is pushed out and we don't typically have a back and forth response when it comes to the social media aspect.
Because we control the content that we're giving to the public.
Since I'm not asking for that blessing.
If, if you're doing it all as a private citizen and doing it on, on your own, then it's just like any other person that's out in the.
I understand, but what I'm asking for is, I'm not asking for sponsorship, but just simply the, you know, slight C, C Central Mass Planning. They, they say it's a good thing and they're behind it. They're supportive of it. I would like to hear from this board, that this board is supportive of it, not to sponsor it.
And so far as that goes, I'd definitely be in support of such, you know, a site out there that, that people can, can actively communicate as a community, get together and have their own input. Once again, I said, if it's, if it's not up to us to police it or to approve or disapprove. But no, I think it's a great idea. There's a great forum to put it out there so people can hear it here. And we'd welcome you back as it progresses if you do this to let the public know what you're doing.
Yes. I'm trying to get one ingredient further. I think that there, I will put this out there and make this happen. But then to link so people can find it, it would be advantageous if there was some way to, to, to link this. And we have a page there for the town, you know, that functions in some regard. Why, why could this not be linked? Or is that, is in that act, you're saying that that's the blessing? That's what I wanted.
I think you could give a link to the town's site for people to, to review and, and search things, but.
Vice versa is what I'm saying. I'm looking at reciprocity.
Well, the town administrator could comment on that site and make choices what they wants to comment on. But.
Everybody can, yeah.
But we wouldn't let anybody comment on the town's page. And that's what he's saying and I agree with that.
No, I just mean so that they can know that that also exists as a forum. Yes.
So what you're thinking, using a pre-existing platform or starting one whole cloth? And the second question is, do you have any models that you're basing this project idea on directly? That you're, that you've been code from?
I can remember all the questions. So, yeah, so the model that I find intriguing is, actually it's a model that's being developed presently. And the fellow is the fellow who set up first wiki in the country. Wikipedia was set up by this fellow, this fellow from Pennsylvania. And they're, they're developing a new model. It's a system that's used in Kingston, New York, to answer another piece of your question, that has been operating, well, the construct was there before they had the web presence. Because it started at like ninety-one, was actually was living in Kingston at the time. And they are now, they have their own currency. They, they develop programs to, to, you know, foster different constructs in town. They have the waterfront on Hudson and, you know, if a group wants to put something together, it's all developed right there online. It's, it's an amazing mechanism to, you know, to develop a town. I mean, I think there's a huge potential here in town that I think is lying untapped. And I would like to see how we can unfold that, how we can unpackage that. A lot of people are really fired up about this construct. It's not, it's not myself trying to pat myself on the back.
Feel like there's reservation from the, from the town end of it to sort of be signing off on it if it's not, if it's just a, like the public Facebook pages that people have. Anyone can make one. There's a few different ones that are centered around Berry and topics, you know, local topics in there. They can be kind of free-for-alls and I don't know if there's a sort of criteria checklist that the town goes through or the, or Andrew, you go through for who you would link to from town.
I mean, anything that's not a, you know, that's not the official word of the town being pushed out, I think is a, is a very difficult thing for us to actually put our seal on. You know, we wanna be able, as, as a municipality, be able to say that this is the true correct word and not just here's everybody's opinion all in, on one area.
I, I, I really take umbrage there. Because what you're saying is that this institution, Town of Berry, is the determinant. We are, we are here.
We are the government of the Town of Berry.
The town, the government of the Town of Berry is the people. That's where the construct is falling awry between you and I, Andrew. This is, this is the people. This is the people speaking.
Let me stop there for one second there, Neil. The, the, when we say the people, the people do meet annually and often in a, and a, but I'm saying that's, that, if you wanted it to bring to the people, to the people, to make some sort of action on it, that would be something to put on, you know, with, for ten or fifteen signatures at the annual town meeting. Put an article up there for the town to vote on to have a real input as.
We can do that in the future, but we don't want to get this going.
Well, I'm saying that's, if you want to really deal with the body, this is the elected body to do our, our administrative work within the confines of what the town has directed us to do. So, you know, going outside of that normal business really isn't our place at this point.
I could, I could accept that.
But let me stop one minute. Claire's had a question, we've been putting her off. I'd just like to let her get a chance to speak.
You need an administrator, I've run websites and everything. You have to have an administrator.
Someone sign onto that role, but the wiki page.
And they have to watch what's going in and out.
So there's algorithms that operate the Wikipedia, for example, right? So when someone wants to make a post and, and alter a definition on the Wikipedia, there's a filtering system, which is the algorithm. There's not somebody sitting there with a button and say yes or no. That's, that's not what happens. It's the algorithm that does that.
And anyone can find the site by just typing in Berry in the internet and they will see whatever site we put up. But the town can't be liable. They can't.
I'm not asking for that liability, I'm sorry, we're getting hung up on the liability.
But if they know, if you have a link from the town to this site, there's a liability there with the state. And that's what we have to be careful of.
But this site could certainly give a hyperlink to the town's website so people could go from your site and look at the town's things from there. But we wouldn't be putting something up from the town that gives them a link to your site or, you know, anyone else is like a manufacturer or anything like that. We're sticking our necks out if, if we give any link to anyone else's sites. So the only links you're gonna find on our town site will be to, you know, other portions, sub-bodies of, of the town. So if you're looking for a mean person to say, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea. Absolutely.
You were, you were as part of the select party, yes.
Right, personally, I, I think as, as a selectman, I think it's a good idea.
So that consensus is gonna take that piece away?
But it's, once again, it's, it's nothing for a voter, there's no action for us on it. So he could, you know, he's willing to give his input and his opinion anyway, but there's no action for us to take here. You haven't asked us for an action that we can act on.
I just asked you if you were, would be, you know, a sponsor or behind it.
Nope, yeah, well.
I'm asking if you're behind it, that's what I'm asking.
That's why we're so willing to have the discussion on camera. I think it's a good idea and I'd like to let the public hear it because I, I think people would be interested in it if somebody had some sort of platform for the people in town.
Have you looked at the What You Chat?
No, I haven't.
Because they've got one that it's through Holden, Rutland, Princeton. It's a whole bunch of towns. And they converse between each other if somebody's looking for an oil man or looking for some work for somebody, or they post jobs on there. They post things about the school.
I think that the extent from much of this could be extrapolated as much, you know.
You should look at that because they.
What we could do there.
And that's what I recall from Groton having it. I know my, my brother and my stepmother go on it all the time.
Yeah, because I've looked for stuff on there.
It's a great tool for local.
I need help with this and somebody will.
Restaurants, babysitters, places to find certain items, services.
And much more.
Yep, there's so much that's going on there, business links and.
Do you ask one other question?
Well.
Give me for it, I didn't answer it, I just remembered.
It is intriguing that you have a new, a newer system that you are thinking of, not using something like Facebook because that can be, that's sort of the Wild West. I'd be, I'd be interested in seeing your idea fleshed out a little bit, seeing what you have in mind more specifically. Like maybe I will look at this Kingston, New York wiki page that you mentioned just to get a little bit more of an idea of what you're envisioning, but yeah, as.
And they've been working it since ninety-one, so, you know, we won't start out like, like that. But there's another piece that you asked me for, are there concepts, platforms out there? And there's one that's run by Central Mass Planning, as a matter of fact. But they're a very regimented ingredient platform. And I thought it would be better to have something with a little more flexibility. But that may be what we start with, you know, but.
Because it sounds like the thing in What You Said Chat is more of classified, like a classified ads database? Or is it more of a forum chatroom kind of a forum?
It's just a forum. Talking back and forth to one of them.
Yeah, I just.
About problems in the towns, you know, what is the other town? They talked about street lights and heating companies and.
And it sounds like this community forum could go the next, the whole next step if you talk about, you know, group purchases, like, like the co-op kind of thing does. And you can get cooperative into it and you can get, you know, job postings and, and there's a lot you can get into it.
Yeah, it's a major augment to what Town Berry is operating.
I am gonna cut this off now and move on to agenda, but thank you for bringing it up. I'm glad we gave you some time on it.
I will get back with.
Look forward to, look forward to seeing more of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
I'm listening, yeah.
Okay, would you like to go to next, Andrew?
Uh, we can knock out the, it's a particular discussion on the town admin, or interim town administrator search and the town administrator search. So we got twelve applications for the interim town administrator position. We'll discuss that in executive session after this. I figured, you know, since we got this, since we got a good response and we can kind of go through that, I'll just, I don't know if you guys wanna take action to form a search committee for the full-time position after this or how you guys wanna proceed in that role? If you wanna take any action tonight to try to get that ball rolling?
No, I'm sure Matt will have input that he wants specific, I mean, I'm, I know Matt, he's gonna have specifics. He's gonna wanna put in the charge for that committee before it's formed.
Okay.
So I would hate to put a charge together that he's, would not be happy with. Yeah, we always look at things very differently and I know there'll be things that he'll want there that I won't think of. That he's gonna want in the charge, so I'd rather put that off.
In that case, you just have the request for town property and the special event permits and then the appointment request.
Okay, request for town property, we have two. Lions Club and by the Christmas for Berry.
Yep.
I will let Dylan read those and make any motion he sees fit. Just do one at a time, take your time.
Okay, Berry Lions Club, one seventeen James Street, Berry, Mass. Wants, is requesting to use Center Common and South Common. Wants to enter December twelfth, twenty twenty, from six AM to three PM for a car show. No food will be served. Estimate number of people will be one hundred and sixty vehicles, four hundred spectators. These are always pretty delightful to check out.
The comments of her, and it's just for your, your reference.
So this is the same, this is the. So there are no sign-offs yet?
No, yeah, just for your, your reference.
See, I don't recall from last year what, they've gotta have some police service up there. I know the fire department usually is up there with them on this. Don't we typically have some sort of sign-off for this?
Yeah, we're, well, we just got it then and we haven't had a chance to send it to the departments yet. But we figured under the, under that new or the proposed bylaw that we're, that we're looking at, it would be a fourteen-day, we sent it to the departments and have a fourteen-day period for common.
This is until next September.
Yeah, we have plenty of time.
So, well, plenty of time and we can actually get that, hopefully get that bylaw in place. So I would like to table this for now. I don't see any reason to take any action on it at this point. But, you know, that, they can kick it through and get the signatures. We can proceed the normal procedure to this point until we see what happens at town meeting and formalize it. And, you know, if they go through the old process and get it approved and get it ready, we can approve it with sign-offs prior to the town meeting, then they're pre-approved and grandfathered from the new bylaws.
Yeah, the town property one is pretty straightforward. It's a special event permit, we'd just be looking for those.
Okay, so use of the property, we just do that straightforward then? Not special, okay. So then use of property.
Yeah, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve this request to use town property for the Lions Club car show, December twelfth, twenty twenty.
And I will second that request. Any comments, questions? Want to take a vote, in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
So they approve for use of property, but that does not do the special permit. Just the property.
And the next one here is the Christmas for Berry Common, Christmas on Berry Common, rather.